You guys, one here in the city of Lawrence. This is in the organization category, outstanding service. This award recognizes an elected official and appointed public official, resident or organization, who contributes leadership, vision, and support to downtown revitalization efforts beyond the normal call of duty. The Holmes family has played and continues to play a major role in the resurgence of downtown Lawrence. They have purchased and rehabbed several historic buildings using local contractors. The family has also contributed to the downtown district with extensive committee, commission, and board service. The Holmes family is the kind of family you want in every downtown. They are tremendous supporters of the community with their businesses, their time, and their talents. So please, join me in thanking the Holmes family as we present them, outstanding service.
I'll just make this really brief, but on behalf of my entire family, my precious wife is here, my daughter, Jim Mark is here. Barbara Bensy is in Pennsylvania, Mark Edgeway is today, he's all over some other things in Golden Green, Kentucky, but they would be here if we could. First of all, I just want to thank the mayor, I think, city council for all the support that you give our family and you give the city, and for enabling us to do this and do great things downtown. So again, this is not just me, I'm accepted this on behalf of my family, but there's a huge team behind us and what we do. You talk about local support, prior to coming here, I stopped by Lawrence lumber in Cali-
I'm departing rapidly, today was the first day of my four children in school, so I'm gonna head back to Champaign.
Thank you to the Holmes family, thank you Jenny, we really appreciate it, all that you do. Since our last meeting, it's been a bit of a- been a bit of a long one. We have named new replacements to positions of police chief and fire chief, and it's my pleasure tonight to invite those chiefs and their families here to be square in. So, I'll be right around the desk in a second. Let's see, we'll go in order of appointment, if that's alright, so Chief Roberts?
Will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified, according to the constitution of this state, to exercise the duties of the office, to which I have been appointed, and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend the constitution of this state and of the United States, so help me God.
And now would Chief Brown come forward? You please raise your right hand and repeat afterward. I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified, according to the constitution of this state, to exercise the duties of the office, to which I have been appointed, and that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof, and preserve, protect, and defend the constitution of this state, and of the United States, so help me God. Congratulations. Thank you chiefs, it's very nice to have everybody on board and up and running, and I should say, both of these guys have really hit the ground running. If I can move on to the next quarter on our agenda, that's my opening remarks. I'll try to keep this fairly brief, but I do want to share a few things with all those gathered here tonight and all those watching, because we've had a very eventful moment. On the note of a chief that has hit the ground running, I'm happy to announce that the city of Lawrence has now purchased a new-to-us 100-foot fire truck that replaces a vehicle more than 30 years old. And we were able to do that because of the hard work of Chief Roberts in locating the vehicle and leveraging our ability to make purchases through South Carolina Forestry Commission. This is a superb fire truck. I say that knowing a little bit about it. But it is in excellent condition and it really should be credited. And I think members of the fire department all deserve a heap of praise for taking a vehicle and really putting a spit shine on it to make it something the city can be proud of. It's not just a good vehicle for us, it's a good-looking vehicle. And congratulations and thank you Chief Roberts for your hard work on that. Few other items to update on. We have been planning this afternoon, meeting with Main Street and city staff, looking forward to Squillin' on the Square, which is coming up the first weekend in October. We plan some new things that will be part of this year's Squillin' on the Square, which we look forward to announcing in the near future, but rest assured, that's something that we're working continually to try to make sure stays fresh and new and maintains the draw to the city of Lawrence. We're also announcing that this year we will have a Christmas market. So, as you are making plans to buy Christmas gifts this year, if you're looking for stuff that you don't necessarily want to buy on Amazon, or that you can't buy on Amazon, or in a big box store, we are locating local craft vendors, food producers, who will be able to come to this Christmas market on Saturdays, beginning on Small Business Saturday, the Saturday following Thanksgiving, and continuing throughout December. So you can have locally-made, handcrafted items that have a real connection. So make some room in your Christmas budget for that. And of course, if you're a vendor and you're interested in participating in that, let us know, because we do want to have a wide variety of participation. As part of that, we're looking forward to being able to offer carriage rides to the community. We strongly encourage our residents up and down West Main to decorate their homes and help us beautify the city. I see Mr. Jimmy Todd's here tonight, his wife, who we honored a couple of years ago for her work in getting Christmas trees out in front yards all across the city, maybe getting a call from us to help encourage neighbors to take part in that. I'm very pleased to share with you all that it was my pleasure, as a Clemson graduate, to welcome a new Clemson graduate to the family of Tiger alumni when our city administrator received his Master of Public Administration degree from Clemson University this past Friday. So I would ask you all to give him a big hand. We are terribly proud of Eric. And I think I mentioned to one member of the press that it's my understanding that both our new police chief and fire chief are Gankocks, so there's no favoritism or bias in our hiring decisions. Well, maybe in spite of my best judgment, you know? I do also want to give you an update on Splashpad. I received word just about an hour ago from Michael Young, who works with Design South, the firm that's actually putting that project together for us, that they've wired up the lights that will uplight the jets of the water coming out of Splashpad. That's completed this afternoon, they've been hard at work on it. Like everybody else, we've been struggling with the same supply chain issues that everybody else has, and so that has sort of dampened the schedule a little bit more than we'd like, but we're working as hard and as fast as we can to get that open. And there's plenty of warm weather left in South Carolina for children to be able to appreciate that this year. Do want to share with you that Counselor Campbell is working in her district, Lawrence Third Ward, on August 27th at Lucas Avenue Baptist Church, from 10:00 to 11:00, to bring a program facilitated by Thornwell. And Thornwell does tremendous work in our community, and this is yet another example of how we have leadership in Lawrence that's working outside the city limits to build connections and do that for the county's good, but also to bring much-needed services and information to members of our community. So thank you Counselor Campbell for that. I do also want to note that we had a very, very generous donation of hand sanitizer from Ralph Pusley Miller. When I say a very generous donation, I mean thousands of bottles. But we were able to take part in back-school activities with our local school district. Our fire department, police department have worked going out to visit members of the community and be able to share that donation and sort of pass on the love to other folks. But we do want to say a special thank you to Mr. Miller for that kind donation. One last thing I will mention is last night, the Historic Preservation Commission met and reviewed the application for Presbyterian College for the facade changes that they proposed to make on the Capitol Theater. They have been through an extensive planning process for what their interior renovations would look like, and they have now presented the modest exterior changes that they will make to the planning commission, the planning commission, or excuse me, the Historic Preservation Commission. And the Historic Preservation Commission approved those changes. And so it's my understanding that we look forward to renovation and construction beginning on that project in the very near future. The timing of that is exciting, because you have a back door outside the Capitol Theater that leads directly onto South Street and the Splashpad. So the ability for young people to use that space and have a draw to our city for young people is exciting. That's all moving forward. That's all I have for my comments. So we'll move on to the public participation hearing part of the meeting. We had nobody sign up for public comment as required, and so I do want to begin a discussion among council at this point about the possibility of a change of the Historic Preservation overlay district that expands beyond the square. The city administrator and our city attorney now have received petitions from the folks that live along South Harper and West Main, and they have met the required petition. They have met the requirement of our existing ordinance to submit a petition for the historic district to be expanded beyond the square, which is the only place that is currently protected now, to include the areas that are recognized by the federal government as historic districts. The difficulty right now is the existing Historic Preservation Districts that are recognized by the National Park Service sort of have a benchmark in the federal government's records in Washington, but they actually offer no protection to the buildings. And so it seemed to us in our discussion that if the members of those neighborhoods are wanting to expand the historic district, then we should bring that before council. But if we're gonna go to the trouble of expanding that district, we wanted, rather than just preparing an ordinance offhand that solely limited those protections to those areas recognized by the federal government, to begin a discussion and determine whether it was a will of council to prepare an ordinance that would take a more broad approach to Historic Preservation and protect other areas. If I can ask, if I can borrow it, have you flipped it? Well, before I begin, I will point out to council, I don't go two weeks, I have not gone two weeks in this job in three and three-quarters years, without somebody bemoaning the loss of that building, which was our post office, which is now a parking lot. There are any number of pictures that I could throw up here of historic buildings, beautiful buildings, that were part of the fabric of this community that we have lost, because we don't have protections in place. But I thought that was a good place to begin, because that may be the single best representative of the cost of not having these sorts of protections in place. The point of it isn't to be nitpicky or overbearing, it's to make sure we don't lose part of what makes Lawrence special. So, right now, you have a Historic Preservation District, and that only covers the square. It does have guidelines for new construction, and it establishes certain guidelines for any renovations that are done. And right now, any applications for buildings that have changes to the outside made have to come before the Historic Preservation Commission, and they, in their best judgment, try to make sure that whatever changes take place, maintain the historic fabric of the building. But as you can see, it only covers downtown and a little bit. What we have sort of discussed is the possibility of expanding the district down South Harper and out West Main, but there's a whole lot between those two streets that is just as historically significant. And then likewise, there are plenty of homes going out East Main that may also be deserving of protections. Let me back up and say, part of the reason why we didn't present an ordinance laying out a revised Historic Preservation overlay and setting those boundaries is because that's just sort of a mark on a paper, and we want to make sure that we have input from all of council in determining where those boundaries should sit. So, other than West Main and South Harper, you see that there are historic residences and buildings that are all along Farley, Academy, Todd, Irby, and others. I just wanted to give you a few examples. Any of these houses could be torn down tomorrow, and there's absolutely nothing we can do about. This is the original Lawrence County Hospital. And it is on the edge of collapse, but that is a historic landmark for Lawrence County. The oldest house in the city, the Dunklin House, built in 1813, as I recall. Not protected. Charles Duckett House, likewise, not protected. We have homes of United States senators, governors of the state of South Carolina, Supreme Court justices, all unprotected. So, the purpose of bringing this matter to council's attention is to give an opportunity to discuss what our goals are. But as an administration, what I would like to see is that we preserve the city of Lawrence historic buildings, and residences, and places of worship, and other historically significant sites in an area that's broader than simply just the square. But that we establish guidelines which are reasonable, that aren't nitpicky, that take into consideration the particular needs of a particular neighborhood or a particular home, the character of the building, whether it be commercial or residential, because not all buildings are created equal. And I would add to this, to create a system where those reviews are being done in such a way that is manageable. And for what it's worth, I would take the position that while I very much respect the work done by Historic Preservation Commission, if we are to expand the Historic Preservation District, the workload placed upon a volunteer committee to do that work may be a little bit more than they could be expected to handle. So anything that we do, we need to take that, the process of it, into consideration. So with that, I just sort of want to open up before the members of council and begin that discussion. Not everybody all at once.
Normally I like to wait till I'm ready, but I'll start. Okay, so it's my understanding that you're just looking for an expansion of what is already there, you're not looking to change the rules, or you are looking to change the rules in addition to expanding it, but also changing-
We would necessarily have to change the rules, because the rules that are in place only really apply to commercial buildings that are on the square. There's no mechanism for dealing with residential buildings.
And will it take in the recent Velda, A and M church, going down in front of St. Paul? It's the property name.
Well, the map is, the map is up to us, so if we want it to, we can.
Well, the members there, they want to include that in their historic place. I have the information from one of the people that went there.
That's an important point. So even under our existing ordinance, there is a mechanism where city council could, on a case-by-case, lot-by-lot, house-by-house basis, designate particular historic sites. But theoretically, even if we expanded the historic district, if there was a portion of the city which might not necessarily be considered historic, but it has a historic site within it, we could designate that.
To add what Sarah said, at one point, I thought that St. Paul and Velda both was listed in the Historic Preservation in Columbia. I do know Velda was, because of the windows and the foundation, and one was the oldest black church in the city. And are you just talking about the thoroughfare of South Harper and West Main? No side streets, but yes, I see Hatch Street and those other side streets. Well, what I'm leading to, I do know that you had Green Street on there coming down, leading to Jersey, which is historic of Springfield. That's what I had started working on at one time, about Springfield being historic, because that was the church that had the first black kindergarten, it was. And it was a white building that again, that was torn down, that had plenty of rich history on it. So that's why I was just saying, reach there. All the side streets with plenty of rich history.
I think you hit the nail on the head, is that if we stick with the language of our current ordinance, the only thing we are at liberty to do right now is take West Main and South Harper, because those are the two areas that have been designated by the National Park Service. And those are the only two areas that we have received a petition from the residents of those neighborhoods, asking that those protections be extended. Just as you said, there are side streets, and if we're gonna go to the trouble of doing it and drafting ordinance and having two votes, it makes sense to me anyway that you would protect beyond just what is currently recognized in Washington.
Mr. Mayor, may I be written in?
Please. Please.
Um, who's, um, on the historical community, the president and the list of personnel that's here? Are they been there for quite some time or?
They're, they're sort of a revolving board there.
Been studying for quite some time.
It, so, uh, with regard to just the historic preservation districts, this, this first came through the Historic Preservation Commission. They gave their stamp of approval. It was forwarded to the planning commission. The planning commission has given their endorsement of extending those, uh, districts. I think that there's a, a desire to be able to make sure that those guidelines are not over the top. But those two commissions, if I, and we have representatives from both here. If, um, Ms. Lowry, if you'd like to speak for the planning commission, you're certainly welcome to. I don't want to put words in your mouth. But I, I think that the general desires is that further protection should be extended. Would you like to make a, a statement on behalf of the planning commission? Please, and I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
I'm Suzanne Lowery. I am Chair of the Planning Commission. We did receive some literature from the Historic Preservation Commission. They submitted a summary, giving us some information about why they wanted to do the proposed expansion for the overlay district to include West Main and South Harper. And the planning commission relies on the city's zoning ordinance to guide and to interpret any time, any new uses or changes to properties located within the city limits come in to our, to our council. Any historic overlay guidelines will become part of the zoning ordinance. So, um, on behalf of the planning commission, we would like to offer these comments for that. Historic preservation is a great thing. It ensures the integrity of structures and structures can be residential or commercial and they can be important to the city's identity. And when we designate certain buildings or areas as historic, we acknowledge that they're important for various reasons. And it can be, um, it can be just about anything. It can be that someone lived there. It can be an event happened there. It can be just that it has a certain architectural flair that you don't see anymore. But by designating it as a historic property, we are saying that we want to keep the original part of that building as, um, instead of, or as preferred over making any changes to update the structure to anything new. This designation shouldn't be bestowed lightly though or, or upon any structures that really don't have any historic value. Just because something's old does not necessarily make it historic. So, there are several criteria that the Historic Preservation Commission uses and the federal register as well, and, and we'll certainly look at all that. We understand that the identity of Lawrence is, is rooted within the historic square, which in the, which already has that. And, um, the designation of historic overlay for the square is important and it makes sense. Shops and restaurants and other structures located on the square, they reap the benefits of having that location and having that designation. This area is different than other shopping or dining anywhere else in the city. So, um, adding a preservation overlay district would, um, would protect those homes from losing their historic character or attributes. However, you need to make sure it's carefully crafted to encourage preservation of neighborhoods, but not at the expense of placing an undue burden on people. The last thing you want to see is something like the old hospital who I, if I had to guess, the repairs haven't been done because frankly, it was too expensive, possibly, or just disrepair. However, you want to make sure that your guidelines are such that it's, it's not hard to do. It's not a burden to do, but it will take someone who wants to do it. But you don't want a street that because the guidelines are too hard or too burdensome, that you do have a lot of homes in disrepair. So, the whole point of this is to make sure that it still contains and, and stays in good, good condition. So, you need to know what your purpose is. We also want to make sure that it follows though our, our plans for the future. We have a, we have a, um, a long-term plan and we want to make sure that those streets that we're including on this, and I think that they do, will stay residential or stay that same, um, same use. When you get some mixed uses in there, if your historic preservation guidelines are such that you can't make changes to the inside or outside where it wouldn't be conducive, you may prevent some sort of commerce or certain people that move in. So, you want to make sure that those are, are conducive to each side. The planning commission would like to ask to be a part of the, um, process to create whatever this ordinance is going to be for the overlay district so that when we interpret and when we use this zoning, that we understand it just as well as you do and that we have some sort of input as to how it will look on the other side of it when people actually come in and want, and need to use, need to, to have, um, I don't know the word I'm searching for at the moment, but, but need to, to, for this to be interpreted. So, that's it. Any questions from me?
Yes, I have questions. Could you clarify to the public, um, this overlay district that is drawn here? So, does this mean that Silver Street and East Hampton Street is not included? Or is this just a?
I can't because I'm not on Historic Preservation Commission. I'm on planning. But from what I understand, there, there is no, nothing set in stone right now. What we're, this is just a discussion to decide what that needs to be at this time.
Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry. I, I think, uh, you hit on some of the points that, um, that are very important from our perspective, from, from the administrative perspective is that, um, we don't want an overburdensome system. And, um, a lot of this can, can be sort of hammered out in the way that the sausage is made. You, you may have a historic overlay district, but the protections might only apply to buildings that were constructed prior to nineteen forty-five, for instance. Because it wouldn't be appropriate to tr- treat a house that was built in the eighties in the same way you would as a house built in the eighteen eighties just because it happens to fall on a particular street. So, um, I, I'm very much in favor of working with the planning commission, Historic Preservation Committee, um, to craft a, a new ordinance, if that is the will of council. I will say, we have a recommendation from both to extend the districts. The question before us is essentially, while we're at it, do we do more?
Just, just a question. The area that you're looking at, I know, well, like over here, where you look at this area here, there's a lot of streets, probably a lot of houses in there that is owned by landlords. People rent. People are in the house, they're, they're not renting. So, would landlords still be required to be?
Well, it, there's, it depends on how we word it. I mean, um, if we're talking about whether or not someone has given a permission, given a permit to demolish a house built in eighteen eighty-five, right now, somebody could do that and we can't say boo about it.
Well, well, I guess that's what I'm getting at. Have these people been notified that, that they're being put in this?
Well, this is what this is. We just sort of wanted to begin the conversation about what, what this looks like. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, no, the hospital. Is that a private-owned person or is it owned by the county or who owns it?
It is, it is privately owned. We, we'll have a conversation a bit later, um, if you don't mind. Let me, let me give you that information.
Okay.
And if you...
Okay. I, I, I was just wondering because it's been sitting there and at one time it was, I think, a shelter and it's been quite a bit for years. For the last three or four years, it's just been sitting there going down. So, I don't know.
I think, I think Ms. Ms. Lowry's point is spot on is that we don't want to create a situation where we discourage people from investing in the city or having requirements that, um, let the perfect be the enemy of the good. On the other hand, right now, somebody could build a six-story glass and steel monstrosity in a historic neighborhood that is completely out of keeping with the character of the community. Or you could, you know, uh, tear down a building that is historically significant. You need, and there's, there's absolutely nothing to stop it.
Okay. So, what we are looking at now is South Harper and West Main. We're not looking on this side of town.
What, what I'm saying is the only two, um, the only two nationally recognized historic preservation districts is the South Harper House historic district and the West Main. And the, it's called Lawrence, but it cuts off.
Okay, that, that's why I was just concerned. That's what we were just discussing about this side of the town, which is being called Possum Hollow and, um, and, um, Homescore Stone.
And, and a- as Ms. Lowry said, there may be, I mean, depending on the, the desire of the neighborhood, the neighborhood may or may not want to have those, those, uh, protections extended, but a particular property owner may say, "But I have a historic house and I'd like to have it recognized as historically significant by the city." And we could do that, um, on a case-by-case basis.
Oh, okay.
The, the reason why we sort of drew that blue line is because if you're looking at the, most archi- architecturally significant, the, the area with the highest concentration of architecturally significant, um, in historic homes, it tends to fall within that area, though I think I would probably extend the line on South Harper further to the east. And the line above West Main further to the north.
But this is nothing that's already set. We're just in the planning, in the, talking about state.
We're just talking.
Just talking.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Please.
So, to clarify everything, and try to put it in layman's terms so they can understand what we're talking about. So, we worked on a renovation project. Is, is that anything that will prevent people from restoring their homes? Is that, because it says historic on it. And that's something that the community came together to, to work on. And to clarify everything, do we need to submit a petition as well, like West Main, so that we can be included in a drawing to be looked upon?
All power is vested within this council to do as council wills. So, if we decide that we want to pass an ordinance that extends the district, we can decide to do that. It's within our power to do it. So, we don't, a particular neighborhood wouldn't necessarily need to if we pass a new ordinance.
Yes.
If we leave the ordinance that is in place right now, yes, they would.
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking because I heard you mention that West Main submitted a petition and they've submitted a petition to expand, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It, they're in the nineteen, uh, I think, I think the one for West Main was done in mid to late seventies and I believe the one for South Harper was done in the early eighties.
Yes, sir.
Don't quote me on that, but I, I think that's, I'd, I'd be happy to get the precise dates on that. But that's more or less when those districts were defined.
Yes, sir. And a lot of the research we have is from the community and tax records. It was, it was a time where, uh, the community was segregated. And then we also have the, the first African-American council member, city, that was elected. I think, um, it wasn't, it wasn't countywide, citywide. Mr. Griffin, so he served as historic and those homes were brought in at a time when African-Americans couldn't purchase homes in different places. So, we have also research information and someone that's been helping us. So, we would love to be a part of it. We would like to be included in it as well. Um, we've been working on it for quite some time and it's, it's, um, stroked pride in the community. And we would love if we could keep those signs.
So, so part of the, the question is, what this ordinance would do is basically say, "I'm going to paint my house on Hunter's Court."
Yes, sir.
If somebody wants to paint their house on Hunter's Court neon purple, today, they can do that.
Right, right.
If it's a, if it's a historic preservation overlay district and there's a, if there is a new ordinance that is, defines what homes within that district fall within the, a required review process. It may, if it falls within those requirements that we haven't written yet, require somebody to say, "Hmm, I don't know about neon purple."
Make sure we follow guidelines.
Right.
Yes, sir.
If somebody doesn't want to have, let me, let me use the area around Lawrence Mill for example. Lawrence Mill is a, is a, uh, tremendous loss that we don't have that anymore. But there are a lot of, uh, homes that were constructed by Lawrence Mill for the employees of that mill that are beautiful homes. That, I think, I, I personally would love the city preserved. My concern is, to go back to Ms. Lowry's point about the cost, is if you had homes in that area and the cost to renovate those homes made it prohibitive to have the private investment because they had to go through the historic preservation approval process, maybe that's not the best thing for that neighborhood. Maybe it is. I'm happy to hear y'all's thoughts about it. But it's, I think that's just where this needs to get hashed out.
Well, I just hope, um, council will, um, hear our humble cry. We just want to make sure that, uh, our stamp is made in the City of Lawrence and the things that we overcome as a community and as, and also as a culture in that area. Um, it's an area of Possum Hollow and the tax records on my parents', grandparents' homes stated that it was a, a area at that time where, um, African-Americans after the Civil War built large homes. So, it was, it was, it's because of research and it's because of passion that we have just to make sure that we're in the, in the narrative, that's all.
And to add to that, uh, uh, and I'll be friends with, now Pos- uh, uh, or we said Possum Hollow and Mr. Luther Crane was the first black on the city council. And his home is being, someone is restoring that, which I think is real good. Those three houses there was there when Possum Hollow was there, when, because of the, uh, St. Paul's Church, Possum, and then Miss Dora's house, and then Mr. Luther Crane's house. So, those three houses are, they're much older houses that, uh, I don't know who owned them, but they've been trying to keep them up and, uh, keep from tearing down. So, uh, I think, uh, Alicia got a good point that we need to look at that.
We. Others?
So the process of determining, um, what areas is being in this ordinance, what would that process look like? Or is that something we need to formalize also?
That's why we got elected to city councils, we get to ma- we get to make the hard decisions.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, because I, like I said, I think there's, you could have a district, but then there, there are houses in, in that district that we could exempt. And likewise, you could have a district, but there could be areas outside of the district, because we don't want to create an undue burden. But we still say, but that house, that house was owned by this guy, and it should be protected. So.
So do you per-.
The choices are.
So do you perceive this as being almost a house-by-house deciding, and have consultation?
Well, that, that's sort of why we're trying to, in a rough sketch kind of way, say, okay, when you think old Lawrence, where's old Lawrence? Um, because the area, uh, let's say, north of Hillcrest, uh, except for a few ha- few houses on Church Street, generally speaking, that's a newer area. Um, there's a, a good portion, you know, uh, Farley Extension wasn't built until the early seventies, I believe. Excuse me. Late seventies. So, that area between East Main and, and Farley, when you get towards Sanders, there's just nothing there. So it doesn't make sense to ex- extend it, where there is, was nothing historic at the time. Um, there's parts of Watts Mill, you could argue, deserve protection, but the city limits don't extend out to encompass all of Watts Mill. So. Um.
Mr. Mayor, I thought West Main was already included.
It is not.
Not, not nationally, but?
It's, it, it's a confusing topic, alright, so, so the area on the square is recognized by the federal government through the National, um, Park Service, as being a historic district. But we have also, through local ordinance, said, and that area is protected, and subject to our Historic Preservation Commission. Likewise, South Harper Historic District and West Main exist and have existed as historic districts. But there's zero protection.
So that's what you're trying to do, is get protection, well, plus over there.
Okay.
Because, because theoretically, somebody could tear down any one of those houses.
Saying no.
Tomorrow. And once they're gone, they're gone.
And, and, and I think that's why, um, I don't want to have Possum Hollow the way it is.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it was torn down, especially Belfry.
So in that case, there may be a site of historic significance, but if there's no longer a building there to protect.
It is not a site to protect itself.
We, we can, we could have a, a sign and recognize it, but that's, that's different from imposing requirements for anything that gets built there.
We don't have to decide tonight, dude.
No. Is, without taking a vote, because there's not a matter on, on the agenda to vote upon, i- is it, do I get the general consensus from council that we would like to proceed with the process beyond just West Main and South Harper? Uh, okay, alright, thank you. Now, thank you, appreciate that, we'll move on to the, uh, consent agenda. Um, do I hear a motion concerning the consent agenda?
Make motion, we accept the consent agenda as printed.
We have a motion and a second, a couple of seconds. All those in favor, please indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and the agenda is approved. Um, we have old business, and that is to present second reading of, of, uh, ordinance seven dash twenty-two dash oh one, which is registration of vacant buildings. Do I hear a motion concerning that ordinance?
I, I motion that we accept, uh, second reading of seven twenty-two oh one.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Alright, hearing none, I call the question, all those in favor of passage of ordinance seven dash twenty-two dash oh one, on second reading, please indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and the measure passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Uh, next, we have registration of rental housing, ordinance seven dash twenty-two dash oh two, is there a motion?
I make the motion that we accept ordinance number seven two two oh two.
Thank you, councilor, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, I call the question, all those in favor of passage of seven dash twenty-two dash oh two, on second reading, please indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and the measure passes unanimously. And then we have second reading of ordinance seven dash twenty-two dash oh three, which is amended rules, uh, for council procedure. Uh, do I have a motion concerning this ordinance?
Make motion to accept seven twenty-two oh three.
Thank you, councilor Bolt, do we have a second? There is a second, all those in, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of passage of seven twenty-two oh three, on second reading, please indicate for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no, and the measure is approved. Thank you, council, that covers our old business, and we will swiftly move on to new business, which is, uh, a resolution put before you to adopt, uh, the employee handbook. I want to say this, not just because I'm trying to pat myself on the back or anything by saying this, but this is, the matters of employee, um, management, hiring, firing, all that, falls within the statutory authority that's given to me, but discussing this, this with our city administrator and, and city attorney, um, and the municipal association, we all feel that as a best practice, and to, to give our employees confidence of knowing that this carries the full weight of the will of council, we wanted to put this, um, employee handbook, proposed employee handbook before you, so that council could adopt it by resolution. Um, so that is the matter before you. I will entertain any, uh, a motion at this time, if there's any discussion.
I make the motion that we accept the civil, um, employee handbook, and that, what I did raise is, is very much needed, or desired, or whatever, so I make that motion that we accept, if it's first read, or if it's at two.
It, because it's just a res- resolution, um, this just requires one, but, so we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, alright, is there any discussion?
So what are the major revisions in this?
I'm, I'm gonna.
Thirty thousand.
I'm gonna defer to the people that wrote it.
Your own.
Master. Now I'm gonna disappoint everybody for not being a master, um, so it just streams on a few things. Before, you could stock up a little bit more leave, it just reduces like how much leave you can stockpile to one sixty. So you can just sit on one sixty, um, hours, yeah, one hundred and sixty hours. There's other policies, it's just clear policies on, uh, demeanor, there's a probation period for when you're hired, so like, for the six, for the first six months, um, you know, you are on probation, we're kind of assessing if it's a good fit for the city, and it's the same for when you're promoted. So let's say someone gets permitted to a new position, well, in the first six months, maybe that doesn't work out, maybe, you know, it's just not a great fit, they can be reduced back to, uh, their original rank, just small little clarity things, and even hygiene policy.
This is just sort of a part of the ongoing narrative that we're trying to, to increase the level of professionalism in everything that we do, and Erica's helping bring us into the twenty-first century by having some of these policies spelled out. Any other questions or discussion that I can direct to someone else? Alright, um, if there is no further discussion, I will call for a vote on this, uh, resolution, eight dash twenty-two dash oh one, which is the adoption of an employee handbook. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. And hearing none, the handbook is adopted. That brings us to the final item, uh, on our agenda, which is an executive session to, oh, sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, oh, gosh. I apologize, y'all. Um, because this is a big one. So, um, let me, let me begin by saying this, um, late last year, I was sitting in my office, and I had a copy of the South Carolina Code before me, and I was looking at what ability we had under South Carolina law to address some of the issues facing the city. And, um, I happened upon a portion of the statute that gives the city the authority to form a redevelopment commission. And I looked at the, uh, ability of redevelopment commissions to help revitalize parts of the city, and it seemed to me that that might be a good fit for us. Um, we have talked about this in our workshops and planning, in budget workshops and planning sessions, and, um, I've got the general feel that that seemed to be something that council was interested in looking into. And so we had our city attorney draft, uh, this ordinance, which would establish a new municipal redevelopment commission, which would give the ability of the city to, um, not just take a, a commercial area, as it is used in many cities, but take neighborhood areas that have become blighted, and do things that would be cumbersome for the city to do, but for this commission to do, um, they can get all hands on deck and, and form a, a plan for revitalizing neighborhoods with input from community players, um, so it's not just a word coming on high from, from city council, but it's, it's actually community-driven. And especially now that there's a time when there's more money coming out of Washington to be able to fund projects for redevelopment than there probably has been in most of our lifetimes, not all of our lifetimes. Um, in order to ask for some of those funds, we gotta know what the plan is, we gotta know what we're asking for. And so this redevelopment commission is, is very critical to coming up with that plan. So that's where this came from, and this, that's basically what this does, so I put this before you, um, with the assistance of our, our diligent city attorney who drafted the ordinance as ordinance eight dash twenty-two dash oh one. Do I hear a motion concerning this motion, during, concerning this ordinance?
So, uh, eight twenty-two, eight dash twenty-two oh one.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So this is a, it's a redevelopment commission that's gonna, let's see, it's gonna have five members, they're going to basically identify areas blighted, we're gonna try to, this is going to, um, utilize city resources to try to promote the redevelopment of the areas.
Let me, let me try to give a more concrete example. So first, we're gonna cheat. Rather than going through the difficulty that we're talking about with, um, the Historic Preservation Commission, or, or Historic Preservation Overlay, what this ordinance does is say, we can set the boundaries of the authority of this commission to the entire city limits. So wherever there needs to be redevelopment, it can be agile to do that. But we can specifically identify, um, areas that are blighted that need redevelopment. And since we're going through the, um, comprehensive planning process anyway, by having this in place alongside that process, those two things can work together so that we focus our efforts on the areas that most need it initially. Um, Ms. Miller, I don't want to single out your district, but I, I think, um, it is not inaccurate to say that there are portions of your district which, it's not as if they have fallen into disrepair, it's that the infrastructure was never there to begin with. The streets, the s- streetlights and sidewalks and the things that tend to make a neighborhood more livable have never been put in place. And so what this is intended to do is be able to say, this is an area that needs particular help. If we're asking for the resources, um, to be able to bring that in from Columbia or Washington to supplement, uh, the city's efforts and CPW's efforts, we need to know what fits for the community. So this commission would have representative members from the community, and from CPW, and from the city, and people who have buy-in to the, uh, what needs to be done. And they would be able to adopt a plan and then implement it.
It, I, you're not thinking of just, just the by area, but that, that whole, the whole area from South Harper on that left-hand side going down, which were in South, Southern Street, Jersey Street, Green Street, Cemetery Street, all them on that side. So I remember very well when those sidewalks were put there, and right now, with all the neighbors are talking about those cameras, because, uh, I know, I, I would like to ask a question, where are we on that, but we're talking about this now, uh, uh, as far as those cameras.
They're, they're tied together, though, because if, if one of the particular needs for redevelopment identifies that better street elimination and cameras are what is needed to make that area more secure, to, to be able to encourage redevelopment, that's part of the plan. So we tie that into the whole package.
And that, and that's very good, because it's very much needed, since you got the middle school over there, still actively over there.
That's right.
And then you got Green's Head Start over there, so it all chiming together, I mean, it, it's very much needed.
I, I care very deeply about this, because the, this isn't just window dressing. If, if we're able to, to develop a plan that we follow strategically, we actually have followed through, there will be generational changes that get made, and, and as I said, improvements made that have never existed.
Exactly.
Is that street, is that, is that like, cover like, that we brought up here while that was like, sidewalks were being up to the street, this committee will help, it will support, get those like, done.
It would.
So will this, this commission also be tasked with trying to implement some of the master plan?
Are you talking about the, the downtown master plan or the comprehensive plan?
Um, well, actually, by both, I mean, uh, I know the downtown plan's a little different than the comprehensive plan, but, um.
So we're, we're due to update our comprehensive plan, and, and we've already been working with, um, Blake Sanders, um, who is also doing a comprehensive plan for the county, so that there's synergy between the city's plan and the county's plan, that just makes sense. Um, so, ideally, we say, the territorial authority for this commission is the entire city limits of the city of Lawrence. But our comprehensive plan could say. But, our comprehensive plan could say, the Jersey area needs particular help. It may be that we're able to then implement that plan and help develop that plan through the redevelopment commission. And then, once that area is improved and on the right track, we'd say, okay, now the area towards Watts Mill needs help. And, so by setting territorial boundaries to city limits, we can follow the, the comprehensive plan and help implement the comprehensive plan, but we're not having to pass a new ordinance to change the territorial boundaries of the redevelopment commission.
What you're saying, now Marion's, her district and my district runs right together, and they're both in the range, and some of those streets has never been done since they've been put there. And all of that runs together, and the school is there right there, and with those roads too. So we all together in that one section.
Yesterday, I had a, one of the most productive meetings with the South Carolina Department of Transportation that I, I bet anybody in Lawrence County has had in years.
Oh, that's, that's true.
That's good news.
We, we sat in my office with one of the commissioners of the South Carolina Department of Transportation, to whom, uh, with her colleagues, the Secretary of Transportation answers. And we had two under secretaries, uh, and one administrative head. And, they want to help Lawrence. We gotta know what to ask for. And so we gave them the priorities that we've already identified. But when it comes to making strategic long-term plans, and for them to know what they're budgeting for ten years out, it's, it's this kind of plan, um, that's necessary, because the hard facts of it are, it doesn't happen overnight. I mean, I don't want anybody in the public to get the impression that we're gonna pass this in six months. Those neighborhoods are unrecognizably different and changed, it's, it's a process. But this is coming up with a plan and having a, a commission that's able to actually implement it and use the powers that are given to it under state statute is the first step in that process.
He is playing.
Correct.
And, and what Sarah said as for, as some of the streets, because I know people on Park Place, my brother, nine, six years old, he's been over there fifty-five plus years, never been paid.
Never been paid.
Never.
So, I mean, the, the theme of this meeting is, there's more to Lawrence and Square. And, and whether it be historic preservation in neighborhoods all across the city, or whether it be addressing blight in neighborhoods all across the city, we're working hard to address that, but in this instance, this is one of those things city council has to, to step up the plate and pass an ordinance to be able to form the commission.
I'm still, I'm still a little, hear me out. Okay, we're calling this a redevelopment commission, okay? This is not, is this, so is this commission gonna be tasked with redeveloping areas, which is what it's called? Or is this commission, or, in addition to what I'd consider redevelopment? This commission's also gonna be tasked with identifying areas of need, like paving streets and putting some sidewalks, which can or cannot be considered redevelopment, I mean, if you get a, a new paved job, that's really not redevelopment. You understand?
Yeah.
That's, that's maintenance, that's repaving the street, which I'm all for, but what is the, what is this commission tasked with? Is this where we go to a commission and say, hey, my, I got whatever street in my area needs to be repaved, is this where we go? Because I don't think that's what this is supposed to be.
You, you're correct, uh, well,
And I think that's what we're going with, where we're talking about it, we're talking about repaving streets, w- w- was it redevelopment?
It, it isn't, it isn't, it isn't, alright, so, um, the name redevelopment commission is, is what is designated by state statute. So, when we're talking about redevelopment, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're taking a residential neighborhood and we're gonna transform it into a, uh, you know, multi-county industrial park. That sort of redevelopment. Where these have been typically used in the past, in other cities, is to take blighted industrial rundown areas of downtowns and commercial areas, and redevelop them to bring in new industry, new business, et cetera. When you're doing that, that necessarily means, if you, if I'm bringing in new businesses into, on a West Lawrence Street, that means I want West Lawrence Street to be paved, and sidewalks don't need to have cracks in them, and if there needs to be more lighting, then that lighting comes into play. So, those, those things do tie in. When we're talking about using it for a residential area, as we are here though, one of the things that I think that I would like to see personally is, we have a, a public housing situation in Lawrence, where we now have third generations of families that are living in public housing. And just because you make more doesn't mean they kick you out, you just pay market rate. So that means that those people are taking up spots for people who are low-income that really need those spots. And, if we have a public housing situation that follows a nineteen fifty's model of doing things, where you put people in barrack-style housing at the very edge of the city limits, and you have multiple generations of people living in that same housing, then something is broken, and we don't need to keep doing that. There are lots of other cities that are moving towards, um, scatter-site public housing, which means that you could take an empty lot in an area that is designated by this redevelopment commission and say, we'd like to put a house there, and it's gonna be public housing. And right next to it, there may be another house that's privately owned, but it's, it's Section Eight subsidized housing. And then maybe not, right next to it, there's just a privately owned, single-family home. Right now, because of the lack of some of these basic infrastructure needs and improvements, there are neighborhoods that are being held back, and, and people won't invest in rehabilitating some of these properties, because why would you fix up your house to be the nicest house on the worst street? But if this is being done as a holistic redevelopment plan that includes bringing CPW to the table, bringing the city to the table, bringing recreational facilities to the table, bringing public housing to the table, then little Johnny doesn't know he grew up in the projects, little Johnny just knows he grow up, grew up on Green Street. That's, that's my goal.
Well, the, the, and I'm glad to hear that, because that's, that's what I see and I perceive with a redevelopment commission. It's not paving a street, it's paving a street and adding sidewalks that didn't have any sidewalks.
Correct.
It's adding period lighting, it's adding new street signs that look real nice, it's, it's doing all those, that's what I consider redevelopment.
Security cameras and all the things.
I just want to make sure that we, make sure we let the public understand what redevelopment commission is, it's not maintenance, it's not, that's not what we're, what we're looking for, we're looking to try to enhance the areas.
If, if I can defer to our city attorney, I believe she had a, a comment from the ordinance, from the statute.
City Councilor, to your question about the redevelopment, so it's not defined in this ordinance because it does not happen, because it's defined in state law. So I'll read you how they define it in state law, so I think that'll answer your question.
It says redevelopment means the acquisition, replanning, clearance, rehabilitation, or rebuilding of an area for residential, recreational, commercial, industrial, or other purposes, which includes the provision of streets, utilities, parks, recreational areas, and other open spaces. It also goes on to state that this does not limit the generality thereof, that redevelopment may also include programs of repair and rehabilitation of buildings and other improvements, and may include the exercise of any powers under this chapter with respect to that area of development. I can tell you, Mr. Mayor, will allow me, when I was the county attorney for Spartanburg County, we had a program that did just all of these things. If there were streets, if there were sidewalks, if there were properties that needed to have rehab funds and so forth, and I'm sure Lawrence County probably has the same funds through their community development department that are available, that's what these kind of redevelopment commissions do. They find those funds from HUD, they find those funds from the county, and they're able to go in and do these kind of projects. People submit requests, grants, and so forth that are reviewed, and then determine if they meet all the criteria, and then they get those funds. So it does include everything that goes into those areas, it's not just about one area, it's an entire overhaul of the area if necessary.
Jenny, I'm, I'm glad you, you said all that. And to be honest with you, that woman sitting right there is my wife. That's what she did when we got married, to the city of North Charleston, so I'm very, very familiar with community development block grants.
Yes, yes.
And HUD grants and all that, because that's what she did.
And so am I.
I used to hear everything about it, and so, I'm, Nathan and I have talked about this before, and I'm all for this, I mean, I think this is fantastic, this is, we, we're overdue needing this. I just want to make sure that in the public setting, that we're all, what you just said is exactly what I was hoping would finally come, it was gonna come out, that's what I thought, that we were, that's what we're looking for, that's what we are gonna do, that's what we need to do. You know, larger cities have whole departments, that's what my wife worked, that's what she did, she was in a whole department that was, that's what they did, her, her job was funded through HUD, and, and she administered community development block grants, and that's what it was all about. Smaller cities don't have quite that ability, but yet, we can still have, we can still have this, and we can still go for some, some funds and still have that.
And councilor, that's what this commission would be able to do, they have that power statuteally to put in for those grants and those requests from the higher level, both federal, state, and at the county level, they can get those grants, so, as your wife would know, the community development programs, they can put in, I know in my dealings, I dealt with the Spartanburg Housing Authority up in, they put in a request, and there was a large block grant that was done to upfit all of the housing authorities up in Spartanburg, the city of Spartanburg.
This stuff works, we just have to go that way.
I, I see a, a major benefit of this is, is there are people that don't sit on this council that need to be part of this process. Whether or not they're, they're, sit on the commission itself, there are things that, as city council, it would be cumbersome for us to do, but they, they will be able to address. To your point, it's not a Christmas wish list, you know, just anything and everything that you want.
We just have to make sure, we just have to make sure people understand what it's, what it is and what it isn't.
Right, right.
And at the same time, there will be a, um, a format in place so that we can hear the voices of the people going, right?
Yes, yes, yes. So, uh, this is something I know, just from talking to several members of council individually, that a, a lot of us are, or several of us anyway, are, are passionate about and looking forward to, I think it has a lot of promise if we do it well. Is there any further discussion on that? Alright, hearing none, I will call the question, all those in favor of passage of Resolution twenty-two dash oh eight oh one, uh, excuse me, yeah. Which is the ordinance establishing the redevelopment commission, please indicate saying aye. Any opposed, no. And that matter is adopted on first reading. We'll look forward to getting that done hopefully next month. Alright, at this time, we do have a matter to discuss in executive session, so,
Make a motion when going to executive session.
Thank you, councillor. Councilors, uh, without objection, we will begin executive session and return to public session at the call of the chair. Thank you, members of the public and press. Yes, ma'am.